This session, workshop session of the Curville City Council is now in order. We will be looking at a, or hearing a report on the homeless population and also looking at the 2019 National Citizen Survey. Since this is a workshop, we will not be taking public comments, but you are welcome here and hope the information is helpful to you. In light of that...
Yes. You know, I was debating about whether I should go to the podium so I can see you, but then I realized I couldn't see you, so... And I really like to look at my audience when I'm talking and see how enthused you are about what I'm saying, so if you don't mind, I'll just stay here.
Sure.
Okay. Let's see, where do I start? I'll try not to ramble because there's, there's so much information I've gathered over the last nine months that I could go on for a long time. But last year, someone asked me quite innocently, "Where do the homeless population in Curville go when it gets to be below freezing or very cold?" And I said, "You know, I, I don't know, and I don't know where they go under normal circumstances." So I began my search. I started with the Chief of Police, David Knight, who told me, he expressed to me there were approximately two homeless people on their tracking system, which was kind of a manual tracking system, and we both agreed there were probably more than that. So I began to, I mean, between the state and the national levels, we have data that comes to us about the popul-, the numbers of homeless people, but I really wanted just to know about Curville. So I had to literally hit the ground, start walking around and asking various organizations what they could tell me about our homeless population, which the most important resource that we have is the Salvation Army, which is on the north end of Hay Street. If you're not familiar with where it is, they have twenty-eight beds. They have ten beds for men, ten for women, and another eight for miscellaneous, because occasionally they do have parents, uh, single parents with children, so they have to provide for them. And I had, I've met Judy Johnston, who kind of supervises Salvation Army, and she was a wealth of information. In fact, when I walk in now, she's like, "Come on in, have a seat," because we spend sometimes thirty, forty-five minutes visiting. She has been there, I think, a total of twenty years and has seen quite a bit. There are some success stories and there are some not-so-successful stories, because the Salvation Army is an emergency situation, temporary situation, for people who don't have a shelter. It's not the permanent fix. So when someone enters the Salvation Army, they are given information on how they can either join the Twelve Step Program or other programs that would help them with their challenge that they have in life that put them in the position that they were in. They're given a three-night stay. They can stay there for three nights, and if they join one of these programs, they can stay an extended period of time of ninety days. But they do have to stay with the program. They have to, after thirty days, look for a job and look for another place to live. But they're given clothing, they're given food, they're given shelter, but they're also given the tools to be on their own at some point. So I was most impressed with the Salvation Army. They are very seldom to capacity. Even in the winter months, they only had maybe four beds being used. So I was quite surprised about that, but as I began to learn, and I've interviewed one of the, one of the homeless women that I got to know who was living in her car, they feel safer in their environment that they have created for themselves, even though it might be cold, they might not have the plumbing and the food and all the things you have with the shelter. One lady that had reached out to the mayor, I did put her in tou-, well, she got in touch with Salvation Army and they got her in an apartment, but within thirty days, she did not feel safe in the apartment. So it's obvious she probably had a mental challenge, a mental health challenge of some kind, and literally returned to her car because she felt safer in her car. So we do what we can. I mean, we, we reach out to them, and that's my goal, is to be here to do that. And if we can help them and they're willing and wanting to help, we want to put them in the right direction. At the back of my report is a list of all of the facilities that we have in Curville, and it's too long to put on this piece of paper, actually. I, I was, I'm just so proud of our city. And Mayor, you probably were instrumental in creating some of these organizations like CAM and Christian Men's Job Corps. So, I mean, Hope's Kitchen, which is First Presbyterian Church, every Saturday provides a hot meal, a shower and toiletries to anyone who wants to come in. They do that every Saturday. A new facility that just opened at the end of Methodist Encampment called Light on the Hill provides a hot meal every Monday and Wednesday at one o'clock. I mean, it just, it goes on and on. There are any number of places you can go if you need something. What I would like to do is create a citizens' interest group so that we could do several things. We could maybe help track the homeless as they come and go, maybe assist the city and just kind of keep in track of who they are, where, where they went. Did they leave? Did they stay? Did they find what they needed? I'd also like to find out where the homeless gather, and I do know, actually, quite a few places in town where they go, but we could have information there that they could pick up, because a lot of these people don't know Salvation Army is at the north end of Hay Street. They might eventually find out, but I think it might be nice if we could, in a quicker method, whether it's the bus station, I mean, I don't, I don't know if people are coming... We know that some people come with the folk vessel, for instance, and they, they came here to, to be here on campgrounds and then just lingered, but they usually move on. That's why our, our numbers fluctuate anywhere from six to twelve homeless people a month because of various events that come and go, and they seem to, to follow those. But if we could bring resource information to them in a quicker method, we might be able to help them, and they may be trying to get back to another city where their family is, and we just, we just don't know that. If we could, the, the group I want to create, if we could give assignments to the individuals, you know, where I might be the one that goes and monitors Salvation Army. You might be the one that goes out to CAM or to First Presbyterian to find out, just ask them how they're doing. What are the, what do you see? Do you see the, the numbers increasing or decreasing? Are there things that we, we could maybe let the public know that you need, whether it's financial support or just donations? So, so having the citizens' group to, to do that, I think, would be helpful. And then, you know, one of the things that Judy Johnston told me when I visited with her is that there are, there are people who come in who really aren't ready for help. They're, they're just, they're, they want meals, or they want blankets or jackets, but they're just not really ready to go to that next step. And then there are some that are, and she has a gentleman that came here. He's been now a year in an apartment, has a job, has a used car, has a girlfriend, he's happy, he's sober. He's one of the ten percent that, that does make it. So it's, it's probably the reason she keeps coming back to work, because there are people who want to get better. They want to find a better way of life. I had some very blessed moments of talking with people about their own stories, and in fact, Mr. Momani, who's here today, I just want to thank you very much for letting me talk with you and listen to your story, and I hope that if we have a group gathering where we have people there to listen as a mentor, maybe your story, you could tell your story to the groups that's there. And I had thought about an awareness day that the city might help put together where we, it's just a gathering where we could have representatives from the resource places. We could have those that might need those resources, and perhaps mentor speakers that could address the groups, as well as just bringing people together and making them aware. Mr. Momani said something to me that really struck home, and that was, "When you have hope, there's still a chance that you can make it. But if you don't have hope, you, there's a chance you won't." And some of the things that we could provide could be just, just that, just that hope that someone needs to go the next step. So I could go on for another hour, because I really have, everywhere I've been, I've spent a good bit of time talking with people, and first of all, everyone in this room has a home, I assume, and every has a meal, has, takes vacations, has cars, has jobs. So it, it was a real, makes me really appreciate what I have, and so I want to do something to help others. And I know everyone in this town is doing that, and you can tell that by the resources on this paper. But I had a lot of other help. The Beth Palmer from the First United Church, United Methodist Church, who just started this new mustard seed program that's giving out clothing and food, was a wealth of information. I mean, there was just many, many people I talked to that gave me a lot of encouragement. So I, with that, I guess I would just open it up for questions or comments or...
Thank, thank you very much, because I know you have had a real heart for this, and in the process have learned a lot about, about resources. Let me just share two or three things. One of the things we see is that there are TAVI students that are homeless. But the question in regard to the numbers there is this: A TAVI student can say, "I'm homeless," and then they get certain benefits, but their homelessness doesn't have to be verified. And so, you know, how do you, how do you look at that? We know that there are students that are sofa surfing and so forth, that, a number of students that, that do not live with their families. An example of that, several years ago, I got a telephone call from a stepfather saying that his son, who was a TAVI student, was going through school during the day, working at night or evening at Peterson Hospital, and then spending the night in the city garage, and then wake up, go to, go to, to school. I called BCFS. They were able to get an apartment for him, even as they do for particularly kids that are coming out of foster care and need that kind of assistance, but it helped to get him, you know, back on track. As you mentioned, we had a seventy-one-year-old female living in her car, you know, parking in cemeteries at, at night. Another situation from last year, not at TAVI, but one of the high schools here in Kerr County, the valedictorian, it lived half her year, homeless, in a car, living in a car with her mother. And she would come to church, or come to church, right, come to school early, and there was a teacher who would open up the school. She could come in, get a shower, and get ready. I just find that striking.
I did talk with Principal Balzer, and she, she told me there were about twenty of those various scenarios, and that a lot of families at TAVI had volunteered to help, whether it was My Home This Month or the rest of the year. The, the school provides food vouchers for them, even through the summer, they continue the food vouchers. So they're tracking, they are, she was very discreet about discussing it with me, but she says they are tracking those students, trying to make sure that they are, they see, see their way through to graduation day. So it, it is amazing that there are that many young people, and I know that this seventy-one-year-old woman, I went to breakfast with her at IHOP, and she told me about the various homeless people she met, and a lot of them were youth who had aged out of foster care. So, and that's, they're too old to be considered minors, and they're, they're, they sometimes don't have all of their paperwork in order, like their birth certificate or other issues, things that they need to get jobs. So, and I can see how they'd be very vulnerable to falling prey to drug abuse or some other type of substance if they're destitute enough to find themselves out of a home. And I really am not an expert in that field. There probably are people who could fill in the gaps better than myself as far as how that happens, but anyway, it's, it, there's a variety of reasons why people find themselves in that situation. All we can do is just be there, you know, to help them up when they stumble or fall, and that's, that's what I want to do, is bring a group of people together. We don't have to have a president, a secretary, a treasurer and all that, just a group of interested citizens who might want to stop in the Salvation Army once a month, or hop into Hope's Kitchen or something, or St. Vincent de Paul's, or any of the other organizations, and just say, "How's it going? Have you seen an increase and have you seen a change, or have you seen an improvement, or as far as people getting back on their feet?" So, it's a work in progress.
Let me mention just a couple of other things. I served on the board of the State Mental Health Association, and one of the things that we were looking at at the time was the dual diagnosis homeless that have a mental health issue and addiction, which is very common and makes things a whole lot more, more difficult. The other thing I would say is, nationally, the number of veterans who are homeless is significant. I, I would also say, fortunately, locally, the veterans' organizations here really reach out to help if somebody's willing to receive help. Okay, anybody else? Any other comments or observations?
Thank you, though.
I, yes, thank you, Delaine. It reminds me, too, it kind of points me in the direction of education. Having taught for several years at the elementary, I actually encountered a second-grade student who I found out was homeless and didn't know for a while, and I found out because of the state of her clothes and, and because of some other questions. And we have mandatory reporting at that point, but I didn't, but, but it didn't rise to the level of intervention, for whatever reason, I, I don't know. But point is, I think, to add on some sort of resource packet or education that you're talking about, not only in locations around town, but perhaps at the schools in KISD would, would be, would be valuable.
I talked to her about that, too.
And it goes down to elementary school, and that, that's heartbreaking.
It is heartbreaking.
It is, and the other would be that another, another issue would be, for my husband who teaches high school, and I, we actually encountered a situation where one of his students became homeless, and we agreed to keep one of those students at our house, and the mom left and went to California. And I say this, not, not, I say this because when we ran into that situation, I was a lot younger, but I was not equipped to have the resources I needed to deal with a teenager's issues when she had been homeless off and on for her whole life. So that situation became very difficult as well, so I appreciate you doing that very much.
Well, I think that's a good idea, though. I didn't think about making sure that the schools, not just the high school, but maybe all levels of, of age groups could use, you know, knowing what to do, how to point the parent or volunteer into the right direction.
Right.
Wow, well, thank you for doing that. You know, I think the good news is, we, we have very interested, committed, working citizens who volunteer a lot of their time, and without that, I don't know where we'd be. I mean, many cities probably wish they had the amount of hours we get from our, our citizens handing out food and, you know, at the First Pres Church, they get, they can take a shower. I mean, they can take a shower and get toiletries, and, and they have volunteers that rotate every month, and a new, a new group of people come in. So you're talking about twenty or thirty volunteers from their church that man that food kitchen, so. I love this town. I just love this town. I mean, I hope that we never change, and I hope that we get to see more and more success stories.
Could there be, I found myself in the same situation. We ended up with a homeless, a, a, a girl in our home when I was teaching. Is there enough education for the teachers to have a feel for? Because that was one of the things that, that came into play for us was legal, legal things, with, because parents were still around, but yet kids weren't living with them. I wonder if there could be more...
Well, maybe I'll talk to some of the principals about that, because I had that same question with Principal Balzer. I, I didn't press her for the answers, but I was like, "How does that work?" You know, because obviously the child's in the midst of some kind of turmoil, and, you know, sometimes there are legal issues involved with those turmoils, and I, I'd, so I wouldn't, I would, that, like I said, this is such a work in progress that could be the next thing we do, is maybe we'll talk to some of the principals and say, "Do you need, do you need assistance for, for just knowing what to do, how to direct your teachers?" Or, and they, they can direct parents who want to help to be able to do it in a, in a way that doesn't hurt anyone else in the process. So, thank you all very much. Thank you for all the input I got from many of you that helped me formulate this idea.
So those that might be interested in working with you on this, do you contact your email address?
Yes, thank you. It's dsigerman@gmail.com, or my phone number and my email, I think, is on this last page of the, the handout that you had there. I think it's on there.
Yes.
And if not, you go to the city website, and you can also contact me through the city website, uh, email, which would be fine also. I already have three or four people who, and one of them, Margie, is here this evening, who came weeks ago and thought, I forgot her. But it took me so long to, to just get this all ready, and it's really, I just found more things out this week, so it's probably never going to be completely done, but that's, that's the way life is, you know? So, anyway.
Okay, thank you very much, and we will look forward to follow-up on that, on that issue. And now, let's take a look at the survey, the results of the survey of National Citizen Survey.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Just want to give a brief background on the National Citizen Survey. The city of Curville conducted its first National Citizen Survey in 2016, and many of the findings from that survey were incorporated into the goals that we're founded on in the Curville 2016 plan. Three years later, we'll conduct our second NCS survey this past March. The information from that survey can be used as a roadmap for where our citizens want us to concentrate our energies over the next few years. And so it's my pleasure today to introduce Camilla Mann. She's from National Center of Survey. She's from Boulder, Colorado, and has made the trip down here today, and she's going to go over this year's survey and its results. And so, without anything else, I'll just kind of turn it over to her.
Very good, thank you. Thank you.
Hello, thanks for having me. It's a little warmer here than it is in Colorado.
You have no idea.
So briefly about our firm, National Research Center. As Stuart said, we're based in Boulder, Colorado. We've been conducting surveys for local governments for over twenty-five years. We've worked with hundreds of local governments across the US, primarily doing citizen surveys such as this one, but we also do other kinds of survey work for local governments. And the National Citizen Survey, which we just conducted for Curville for the second time, has been designed to measure community livability as a whole, and it's a largely standardized tool. Most of the questions on the survey are fixed. That allows us to provide you with a high-quality, you know, tried and tested tool, also to give you really stable trend lines over time, and it allows us to create benchmark comparisons for each item on the survey. So in addition to your ratings, we're able to create an average rating based on all of the other hundreds of communities that have asked the same questions of their residents, and so that helps add some context to the data, and I'll get a little bit more into that as well. But if you've had a chance to look at the reports, either this year or the ones from 2016, we do organize the data around what we consider to be the three pillars of community livability: community characteristics, governance, and rates of participation. And within those three pillars are these eight facets of community livability that we've derived from our research: safety, mobility, natural environment, built environment, economy, recreation and wellness, education and enrichment, and community engagement. As already mentioned, this is the second time we've conducted the NCS for Curville. It is a scientific survey. We use all best methods in survey research. It's a random sample of households. The response rate this year was thirty-one percent, up slightly from 2016 when it was thirty percent. Both of those response rates are on the higher end of average, strong response rates. The city chose to augment the standard sample size and slightly increase it, which allowed us to have a tighter margin of error around the data, a higher level of precision. So the margin of error around the data for the 2019 is plus or minus four percent. We also scientifically weighed the data back to the most recent census profile, demographic information available for the city. So it's really our goal to make this survey as representative of the community as a whole and try and help, you know, give the voice to what sometimes can be the, the silent majority, residents that may not have time to be as involved or engaged. As I mentioned, one of the benefits of conducting the NCS is that benchmarking comparison database. We have about five hundred communities across the US. This just gives you kind of a rough schematic to see communities, many here in Texas, but all over the country, all different sizes, and that helps put your data into context. Here's a quick snapshot of all of the questions on Curville's survey that were able to be compared to the benchmarking database. You can see how many were higher than that average, similar, and lower. This is similar to what we would expect to see. We've intentionally made it very difficult to be anything other than similar to the benchmark. We've put a pretty wide band around that average rating, and our rationale for doing that is to try and help make the data as actionable as possible for you. So areas where you're higher than the benchmark should truly be, you know, considered areas where you're really excelling, and areas that are lower are potentially areas for additional focus, depending on, you know, how they, what they are and how they fit with city priorities. Some of the, the things that were higher than the benchmark in Curville, I'll get into some of them a little bit more detail in the slides, but the city has a place to retire, the availability of paths and walking trails, a lot of measures of civic engagement and participation were higher than what we see. Volunteerism, for instance, was, was higher than the national benchmark.
I'm not surprised.
That was great, great to hear that that's been noted by you all as well. Some of the items that are lower than the national benchmark have to do with street repair, street cleaning, storm drainage, some shopping opportunities, a variety of housing options, things along those lines. This gives you a snapshot, of course, that, you know, the best benchmark, the national benchmarks are helpful to put things in context, but of course, the best benchmark of all is comparing Curville to Curville. So here's how the 2016 ratings compared to the 2019 ratings. When we're comparing the ratings over time, we're looking at a slightly higher margin of error for comparison, so anything that was six points different or more was considered to be statistically significant change over time. You can see the vast majority of items remained stable from 2016 to 2019. Several were trending up, and only one was trending down. That was ease of walking in the city, and that's going to tie into some of the other survey questions coming up. But some of the items that improved over time had to do with garbage collection, recycling, natural areas preservation, public libraries, public information services increased, and quite notably, a couple of measures of public trust: value of services for taxes paid and, to the city, and overall competence in city government increased from 2016 to 2019. Here are those eight facets of community livability again. This is from the Community Livability Report. If you've had a chance to see that, this is representing a question where we asked residents how important, if at all, each of these facets were for the community to focus on in the coming two years. And so the items that are starred are the ones, they were all found to be very important, but the items that are starred were those that were found to be most important, or Curville residents said were most important: safety, economy, and recreation and wellness. Now, safety and economy were the top two most important in 2016, and they're what we typically see when we ask a question like this, but it is notable that recreation and wellness was also a top priority this year for residents. It's not something, we have seen it in other communities, but it's not as typical as the safety and economy, so that's definitely notable. The other thing that this chart is telling us, they're all kind of shaded that same medium blue color, that means broadly within each facet, the questions that can be rolled up into each of those facets tended to be positive and similar to the national benchmark. So we had a few key findings in the Community Livability Report. I'm going to run through those. As I mentioned, there's a ton of data, and I don't want to talk at you too long, but just wanted to go over some of the key highlights. There's, of course, a lot of data points I'm not going to be able to mention in a, in a presentation, but our main takeaways as survey researchers, the first was that Curville residents continue to enjoy a very high quality of life. Most of the questions on the survey are asked on a scale of excellent, good, fair, or poor. So the percentages you see here on this slide represent the percent of respondents that said excellent or good for each of those items. So about over eighty percent or more saying that the city is a place to live, their overall quality of life, and their neighborhoods as places to live were excellent or good. At least seventy percent also saying Curville is an excellent or good place to raise children. The overall image or reputation of the city is viewed positively, as is the overall appearance. These were all similar to the benchmarks and remain stable over time. One rating that did have a statistically significant jump in 2019 was Curville is a place to retire. That went from eighty-three percent excellent or good, which is already quite high, to ninety percent excellent or good, so almost all respondents saying that it's an excellent or good place to retire. It's higher than the national... It's higher than the national benchmark. In fact, it's much higher than the national benchmark. It's among some of the highest ratings in our database for a place to retire. It was, the ranking was number fifteen out of three hundred and fifty-seven current communities for that question. So, that was definitely a standout when we're looking at the data. A majority of residents rate the sense of community as excellent or good. This was also similar to the benchmark and stable over time. Almost all residents said that they were likely to recommend living in Kerrville and that they plan to remain in the city for the next five years. These rates were also similar and stable. The next key finding was that safety and economy remain top priorities for residents as they were in 2016. Safety ratings tended to be very high, at least nine and ten giving positive ratings to the overall feeling of safety in the city. They reported that they felt safe in their neighborhoods and in downtown and commercial areas. Safety services were also rated positively, almost all giving excellent or good ratings to fire services and ambulance or EMS. At least eighty percent giving excellent or good ratings to fire prevention, police services, and crime prevention. And most of these were, were stable over time and, and similar to the benchmark, but the rating for crime prevention did increase from 2016 to 2019. So, residents were feeling more positive about those efforts in 2019. Looking at some aspects of the economy, which is also another top priority, a majority of respondents giving excellent or good ratings to the overall economic health of the city. That was stable over time, similar to the benchmarks. Looking at some different aspects of economy here on this slide, you can see up at the top there, the highest rated was Kerrville is a place to visit. Seventy-one percent saying it was excellent or good for that. About half saying the overall quality of businesses and service establishments was excellent or good. Those were stable over time and similar to the benchmark. Potential areas for opportunity, the ratings for shopping opportunities and the vibrant downtown or commercial area, about one quarter of respondents saying that was excellent or good. And those items were lower than the national benchmark and stable from 2016. When looking at some rates of participation within the facet of economy, almost all respondents said they had purchased goods or services in the city in the last twelve months prior to the survey. That's, that's a pretty common number that we see in communities, so that was similar to the benchmark and stable over time. However, a majority said that they worked in the city, and that's actually a higher rate than what we typically see nationally. The final key finding is that mobility continues to present an area of opportunity for the city. About three in four residents gave high marks to the overall ease of travel in the city, and the ease of travel by car, and the availability of paths and walking trails. The availability of paths and walking trails was one of those items that was higher than the benchmark, so that was a standout in mobility. And those were stable over time. Some potential areas of opportunity within mobility, less than half gave excellent or good marks to ease of travel by bicycle, street repair, and street cleaning. Those are all lower than the national benchmark as well. Also, not shown on this slide, but the, as I mentioned earlier, the only item that was trending down over time was within mobility as well. That was ease of walking decreased from 2019. When asking about alternate modes of transportation, fewer than half reported that they had walked or biked instead of driving alone. That is a lower rate than the national level as well. Another benefit of doing the N C S, well, most of the questions on the survey are fixed, as I mentioned. There is a section for special topics that are specific to the city, and so, these were developed with city staff. Their first pair of questions asked about a series of potential capital projects. And so, this, this chart is showing us results from both. So, what the top bar is, that sort of orangish color, residents are responding to the question that read, please rate how important, if at all, you think it is for the city to invest resources in each of the following capital projects. So, that orange bar is showing you the percent that said it was essential or very important for the city to invest resources in each of these three items. These were the top three most important items of a longer list. So, street pavement and rehabilitation replacement, reductions in localized flooding, and addition of new sidewalks, which kind of ties in with that ease of walking rating potentially, and some of the lower ratings we saw for street repair. Then, the bluish bar, residents were then asked, they were given the same list of capital projects, and asked how much they would support or oppose funding each of the projects through the issuance of debt such as a bond without a related property tax increase. So, that's showing you the percent that said strongly or somewhat support. So, you can see that, you know, the items that were rated most important also received very strong support for issuance of debt to pay for them. The final custom question asked about the use of social media, this was a select all that apply question. So, you can see residents were asked which platforms of social media they, they, they use. Facebook and YouTube coming out on top, with a majority saying they use those. Nextdoor and LinkedIn lower down on the list. And about two percent selected that they, said that they don't use social media at all. So, just to wrap up, our conclusions, the main conclusions from our takeaway was that residents really continue to enjoy a high quality of life. You know, that it's an exceptional place to retire was a standout to us. That residents place such a high value on recreation and wellness was a standout to us. Some of the items not shown on the custom question slide, but are in your report, have to do with, some of the other capital projects have to do with some recreation and wellness as well. And really, residents found all of them to be important and, and most had at least somewhat support for the funding as well, which is where they're showing the top items. Safety and economy tend, you know, are still very important to residents, and overall ratings are strong within those facets. And mobility continues to present a potential area of opportunity, and it looks like residents are on board with supporting some improvements there. Moving forward, we would encourage you to continue to do what you've been doing. This is the second time we've conducted the survey for Kerrville, and I know the city's been digging into the results and using them. We just encourage you to dig deep into them, continue using the data to help inform the decisions and bring the voice of the average resident into your decision-making. And I'm happy to answer questions now, and also, we're always happy to answer questions at any point later on, too.
You've, you've done these surveys in a lot of places. In looking at this survey for Kerrville, if you were to project down the road twenty years, do you see warning signs or particular opportunities that need to be seized?
That's a great question. I don't, I don't see it as much as I have seen some more, I've seen more extreme ratings in other places where I would, you know, that they, or they may already, may already be in some kind of a, a problem like that. Standout to me really about the results is, you know, some of the, there's only a handful of areas where you're lower than the national benchmark. And they really corresponded with the custom questions in terms of, you know, residents supporting capital improvement projects. And it seems like, from my perspective as an outsider, as a survey expert, but an outsider on Kerrville, it looks to me like, you know, moving forward with those capital improvement projects would be a big hit and probably address most of those concerns.
All right, let me, let me ask one more and then we'll open it up. The, in terms of desirability of a place to retire, nineteen seventy-two is the first time the Chamber of Commerce advertised nationally as, as this is a place to retire. Now, the twenty-seven percent of the population is sixty-five and over, including myself. We see a real need to attract and to keep younger adults in the community for this to be viable over the years. Do you see that same thing?
I mean, it's, certainly you want to be a community that has, is welcoming to folks of all ages, and you want to have young families coming in, too. But I didn't see a red flag in the data in terms of, you know, being below the benchmark, you know, where you're not below the benchmark for a place to raise children, or K-312, or any of the things related to being a welcoming place for, for families to be. So, that didn't stand out as a red flag to me. I mean, the retirement rating is extremely high and great, but it didn't seem like it was at the expense of the others necessarily.
Okay, all right. Other questions?
I have one.
And I'm not a statistician, and I don't want to be a statistician, but explain to me the benchmark.
Sure.
Where, I mean, does that take all those purple dots that we saw of every city that you conducted in the last year and kind of aggregate that?
So, most of the data in the benchmarking database is within the last two years. Nothing is older than five years. It's the most recent survey data we have available for each of the communities in the database. And they have had to have asked the exact same question as you. So, if you have a, a copy of the technical appendices report, you can see some detailed tables about the benchmarks, and it will tell you your rank, the number of jurisdictions that asked that same question, and your relationship to the benchmark. So, what we've done is we've created an average rating for each of the questions on the survey. And then, if you're within ten points of that average rating, then we consider you to be similar to the benchmark. As I mentioned before, we put a, we intentionally put a wide band around it. So, to be higher than the benchmark, you have to be at least ten points higher than that average of all of the communities in the database that asked that same question. And to be lower, you have to be at least ten points lower.
Kind of an oversimplified question. So, Kerrville then is being compared to an urban environment also in those benchmarks, so in Atlanta, Georgia, or Chicago, Illinois, where walking and biking may be a completely different transportation mode as opposed to what we have here.
For our National Benchmarking Database, it's about five hundred communities across the U.S. You're right, there's, there's very large ones, there's very small ones. There are more smaller communities than there are larger communities in general, so we, we do have a lot of communities Kerrville's size. We can create an add-on option that the city hasn't opted for, but, but can in the future, or even retroactively as custom benchmark comparisons. So, we could, we can pare down the database further by region or population size, or if you have, you know, a list of peer jurisdictions, you know, to kind of get a more like comparison. But broadly, what we find, even though there's much larger communities and, you know, from other places in the country in the database, is that local governments are all in the same business of providing services to their residents. And the way it can help with the context is fire services, library services, for instance, tend to always get very high ratings, ninety percent excellent or good or more. Street repair does tend to be lower. In Kerrville's case, street repair was lower than the benchmark, but an average rating, say, of sixty percent for street repair might be similar to the benchmark, whereas ninety percent for fire services is similar to the benchmark. And that, we kind of see that everywhere. So, instead of comparing services to services, they help put it into context. But since Kerrville is building a trend line, I think that that's, you know, another very important and may, may perhaps more valuable thing for you to look at.
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Could you comment on the, the sampling and how you did the sampling, sample size, identified who would be surveyed? And just the whole, kind of the science behind that? Because I think that there's, there's maybe some misconceptions about how that survey works. And my, our interest was making sure that the entire city was represented, so geographically as well as demographically. So, could you make sure that people understand how we did that?
Sure, absolutely. So, the way our, our sampling process works is that we purchase lists from the USPS that are updated quarterly, and that includes all residences within Kerrville. We then geocode that list to make sure that we're only looking at a pool of households that fall within city boundaries, because we know in communities, it, it depends on the community, but, you know, there's borders that straddle zip codes and things like that. So, we get very precise with it. And that way, all households within city limits are eligible to be part of the sample, whether they're renters, or owners, or multifamily, or single family. That's why we use USPS lists of residences versus like property tax records or something along those lines. So, then we, we geocode it to make sure that all the addresses fall within your boundaries. And then, we look at the percent of multifamily and single-family units based on census data and, and compare that to the list. And typically, in most communities, we intentionally slightly over-sample multifamily units. And that's done to address what's known as non-response bias. In any survey like this, anywhere we're conducting it around the country, there's certain types of groups that tend to overrespond to surveys, and certain types of groups that tend to underrespond to surveys. We tend to hear from more homeowners than renters, we tend to hear from more older adults than younger adults, that kind of thing. So, by intentionally slightly over-sampling multifamily units, that can often serve as a proxy for folks that might, you know, might be renters or younger, that sort of thing. So, we're looking at that when we sample, and then we're making sure we're doing a random sort in Excel. We've got some formulas we use and pull the number that we're using for the sample. Kerrville intentionally increased the sample size, so we typically, with the response rates we get, we're shooting for a margin of error of plus or minus five percent. But because Kerrville expanded the sample size, it was a tighter margin of error of plus or minus four percent with the number we got back. And that number can work for any size community, getting over five hundred responses to that four percent margin of error, that's used for national-sized polls as well, in a much larger cities. So, it's, it's representative that way, absolutely. And then, as far as geographically, you can see a schematic, a rough map in the technical appendices that shows which households were selected. But typically, that should overall mirror housing density within the city.
So, overall, how many surveys would you have sent out?
It would have been sixteen hundred, and Kerrville increased it to eighteen hundred.
Okay. And how did, they were all by mail?
They were. So, it's a, it's a multi-contact mailed method, which is best practice in, in survey research of this kind. We send out a pre-notification postcard, letting the household know they've been selected, and that they'll be getting the survey soon. Then we send two waves of the survey packets with postage-paid return envelopes, and they also had the opportunity to complete the survey online if they preferred. There's instructions in the cover letters about that. And then, one thing I didn't really touch on is that after data collection was well underway for the scientific sample, this, we also gave the city a, a link to share with the entire community, so that anybody that wanted to participate in the survey could have the chance to do so. There are about a hundred of those responses. Those are in a separate standalone report. Typically, they're, the responses aren't wildly different than what we see in the scientific sample, but we, we detract them separately.
Okay, I have one more question. Regarding Kerrville as a place to retire, what examples would you cite that would make this more desirable for a retirement area? Like, would it be quality of life, medical, you know, attainable medical assistance or?
I mean, those aren't assessed as much in, in this kind of survey, but, but typically, we, we actually do do a, a community assessment for older adults survey. And so, those are the kinds of questions we would ask in that, you know, accessibility to, to services. Sometimes it's being, you know, it's having a community, being close to, you know, church or family. I think weather can be an important role.
Right.
Availability of food. Affordability is huge, of course.
Other questions?
You kept referring to a, a deeper, bigger set of data. Did he have a, I mean, we've got this, is that what you're referring to?
So, there's a Community Livability Report, that the presentation kind of, the, the key findings in the presentation are the highlights from that report. But there's also a technical appendices report that gives you the full set of frequencies and the number of respondents for each frequency for each question. And gets into the detailed level of methodology, that's where the, the map of the mailed sample is, and the additional information about the benchmarking database, where you can see the rank for each question.
Mr. Vanery, do you have that?
I don't know if we do, but we can get it if we don't have it.
I'd be curious to see that at some point in time.
Sure. What we don't do is release, it's, it's a anonymous survey, so we don't release actual names of people that have been surveyed, but all the data, the raw data, we would have.
The mapping portion, I'm not as, I'd be as curious about as anything.
This is, this is very interesting and very helpful, particularly since we have done it previously. And I would just say this, that I'm glad our fire chief is not here, given your very glowing words about fire safety and fire departments. He would, he could kind of puff up a little bit.
He was.
It just means that it's a high bar. Everybody loves their, everybody loves their fire department. Doesn't mean they're not doing a great job.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any, anything else?
Good information.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then, I am going to adjourn the meeting, and we'll be back in here at five-thirty for the agreement we have with Schrader University. Okay? At four-forty-eight, we are concluded.